We'll call the January 21st meeting of the Mammell City Council to order. First order of business is Alderman Johnson will not be with us tonight. Second order of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you'd all please rise and I'll lead us in that.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for the community, Lord. We ask you to bless our citizens and bless our city, Lord, and bless the government as we try to work with the people, Lord, and provide the services that they need, Lord. We ask you to be with our troops that are serving overseas, and we'd ask you to watch over them and protect them as only you can, and be with their families here. We ask you to be with us as we leave here, Lord, and help us to be an inspiration to those around us and that we may do good for someone that is needing help, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no special guests or announcements at this section right here. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the January 6 regular meeting. All the council members have a copy of the minutes in their packet. Are there any corrections or additions?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been motion second that the council approved the minutes of January the 6th. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I only have one public comment card, and it is not on an item that's on the agenda, so we will have that at this time. I'd like to ask Ms. Marion Scott to come up. Please state your name and address for the record, please. I know you know that.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, Marion Scott, 12 Spring Drive. And on March 11th, the city will be having voting, and it's on millage, isn't it, Mr. Mayor? Isn't it a millage vote?
I don't know.
Well, anyway, March 11th, and I know we're going to have voting because I've been asked to work it.
Okay.
And I think someone said that it was on millage, and so I didn't know what that was, because I was hoping I'd find out tonight. But really, the reason I'm speaking tonight is because I want to remind everyone that with the passage of the state law, picture ID is required. It used to be that if you came in to vote, we'd say, "Do you have ID?" We were required as voting workers to ask, but you, as a citizen, have the right to say, "I either don't want to show it, I forgot it," or, and you could use just about anything. You know, we would take your voter's registration card, your ID from your club membership, anything, you know, to kind of show who you were. Well, now you have to have particular pieces of picture ID. And while this has been publicized, I did see it on the news the other morning when Little Rock or North Little Rock or something was having something like that. I think it's a good reminder for everyone who does not have, like, a valid driver's license or passport to have the opportunity now to get their valid ID for voting. So you will be asked for valid ID. If you cannot provide such ID, and you still want to vote, you'll be allowed to vote what's called a provisional ballot. And provisional ballots, you know, when we have early voting, how we do the machines and everything, well, a provisional vote would take you away from that machine. We would pull the particular paper ballot that would be appropriate for you. You would sit off to the side, fill out your ballot. Those ballots were put in a special envelope and shipped under separate cover to where the votes are counted. Now, in this particular case, if you don't have photo ID, you will vote a provisional ballot, and then you have so many days to appear at the Voting Commission and have your vote validated. So they think that this might be a big enough issue that they are naming assistant judges to do nothing but take care of provisional voting. Now, I don't think that this election in Mammell on the 11th is going to be that big of a deal, and most people can provide ID, but I think for the election in the fall, it's going to be a much bigger deal. And one way that you can get a state ID card, which I believe is one of the allowed types of identification, is you have to have particular documentation, and you can get it at the revenue office. But you have to have two primary documents, which includes a birth certificate, a passport, military ID, or an INS document, and secondary documents, which include a photo ID from school or work, a health insurance card, tax return, marriage license, and you'll also have to have a valid social security number. And then you take that stuff to your local revenue office. They take a picture, you get an ID card that looks very similar to a driver's license, and you can use that for your ID. And just remember that if you use a birth certificate for proof of identity and your name has changed due to marriage, or you've changed your name for any other reason, then you have to have something proving why the name change was there. And I'm just doing that as a reminder because the last thing I want to do as someone who works the elections is turn anyone away who wants to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. I did read something in the newspaper. They had the election in Jonesboro for the new state senator there, and there were several provisional ballots that had to be cast. You know, I read that. That's the latest one I've heard. I think it was the first one that that was used at, the IDs.
I think I heard that several votes got tossed out today.
Oh, really? Okay. I hadn't heard that. I just, okay. All right. So we appreciate the reminder, and hopefully there will be some publication on that. We'll find out what they're voting on on March the 11th, too. Next item is the financial statement review. You have a copy of the financial statement for December 31st in your packet. Ms. Thompson is here. Are there any questions? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I was looking at these numbers here, and I was wanting to ask Ms. Thompson if the actual numbers, are they, do you see them changing much here as you massage the final numbers to get them ready for?
Yeah, there could be quite a few changes just from, you know, after audit and some adjustments as far as revenue, what we can claim as revenue for this year, and expense changes and things like that. So, yeah, there'll be quite a few changes.
Okay. Right now, it looks like we had, after all was said and done, we had revenue over expenses exceeded it by about $181,000 in the black. And do you see that changing one direction or another materially?
I don't think I could adequately give you what that may be at this time, because I'm not even that far into the process to be able to give you good numbers, yeah.
Well, based on what I see here, it looks like we, last year, we had budgeted about a $345,000. We had to transfer money in, in the budget, about $345,000, but it looks like we didn't need it, so.
Right. We haven't needed it thus far, but, I mean, for instance, the community service fees will be, that amount will be adjusted based on what the allowance for a collective council needs to be for this year, which I don't know what that is yet without doing that calculation. So that, for sure, I know will change. And as I do the revenue, as I review the revenues, sometimes things get recorded in the wrong place, so there could be some changes in that area, too. So I don't want to, you know, say yay just yet.
I'll kind of say yay at this point, because that's significant that we did not run a deficit this year. At least it doesn't look like it. It looks like we basically broke even this year, which is very good.
Yes.
And I see us overall being in good financial shape, and I'd kind of like to tip my hat to the mayor for not spending all the money that was budgeted and help making that happen. I guess that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
I wish I could take the credit that you're giving me, but it's the department heads that do a great job of managing their budgets, not spending everything that they're allocated each year, so. There's no other questions on the financial statement? I would entertain a motion to accept.
I do have one more, one more thing here. Over here on their sanitation fund here, it looks like we ran a surplus in the sanitation fund this year of about $445,000.
Yeah, that, we normally run a surplus in the sanitation fund just based on the way they spend their money, but, yes. That'll change, too, but it will be a surplus for sure about that.
Okay. Well, it appears then that our trash fee is probably pretty adequate then.
Yeah, there'll be some adjustments there, though.
Okay.
I don't really know exactly how much, because that's also part of the allowance calculation as far as how much of the sanitation fees that we need to adjust based on what we don't believe will be collected.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Do you think you'll have some good numbers for us in the February meeting?
No, no. It would be more like June.
Okay. So about six months' lag, I don't know what we really spent.
Yes, on actual audited figures that will not change anymore.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
If there's no other questions or discussion, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials for December 31st, 2013.
Sub moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the financials for December 31st, 2013. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Sub moved.
It's been motion second that the council read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. First item under unfinished business is the third reading of ordinance number 834 regarding fence construction. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council, the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 834, an ordinance amending Section 14 of the Mammell City Code concerning application of the subchapter to residential uses and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Hoag?
I visited with the county attorney this past week, and we did not come up with an amendment that I would be happy with, and so we're not going to be offering an amendment. We'll just vote on it like it is. If there's, if it needs to be addressed in the future, we'll address it then, but we'll, I'm not going to offer an amendment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alderman Mosley?
Can I ask you what your concern was, or what it was you were trying to amend it to?
Well, what I was trying to do is I wanted the fences that are facing the road to be the flat fences, board, board, board. We didn't come up with a name of fence that I would be happy to support.
Okay.
So we're just, I'm just not going to make an amendment at this time. If it proves to be a problem in the future, we'll readdress it, but right now, we'll just see.
Okay. And as I read this thing, I kind of read it again. I was looking for any changes and didn't really find any, and I assumed there weren't any.
We made one minor change from the last time you saw it on Section 4 on Page 2 of the ordinance. The words "maximum height" were added to that section right there because it just said must be a six-foot fence. So we had to change it to maximum height because in another section of the code, it actually addressed that it was a maximum of six foot. So what this was going to do is if we didn't put the maximum height in there, everybody had to build a six-foot-high fence. So that meant you couldn't build a four-foot one, a three-foot one, or anything like that. So that's the only addition that's been made to this document since the last time.
Okay.
And it's clarifying a section, and I don't even know, I don't think it's in this section.
No, it's, it's.
Well, it is. If you look up at 2, Section 2 up there, it says, "On residential, used to be more than six foot unless a variance has been specifically granted." Should be unlawful for a fence to be more than six foot tall. So that's just trying to clarify those two sections and make them the same.
Okay. And the way this reads now, and it appeared that way to me when I read it again, was that it is okay to have picket fences either six feet or?
Or less.
Or less. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance 834.
Second.
It's been motion second that the council approve ordinance 834. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
No.
Alderman Hoag?
No.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five, four, two against, and one absent. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number 835 approving the formation of an improvement district. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Ordinance number 835, an ordinance to establish and lay off City of Mammell, Arkansas municipal property owners, multipurpose improvement district number 15, Montmartre project, and for other purposes.
Okay. We have Ms. Michelle Allgood and Mr. Jeff Fuller here to represent the applicants on this matter, and I think they've got a handout that may help you a little bit. Mr. Fuller?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Oh, okay. You're here to answer any question?
She told me to stand here.
Well, okay, you might explain the drawings, yeah.
Okay, the drawing that has just the red border, that is the entirety of the district. That is what would be included in the improvement district. The color-coded one, this up here is, that is the existing development that's out there, the existing neighborhood. It is not part of the district, cannot be part of the district without those property owners consenting, not asking for it to be part of the district. The red is a final platted piece of the district, and the green is a second final platted piece of the district. The blue is not platted. There is an engineering plan that they might do in the future. Obviously, that would have to go through the normal approval processes just like the first two plaques did, but at this time, it's not developed, and, but we do want it to be part of the district.
Anybody has any questions? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up with the city attorney. Last week, I'd come up with some verbiage in, I guess it was 14-94-105 of state code, looking as if it provided a way for a municipality to actually reject a suburban improvement district based on perhaps traffic considerations and that sort of thing. And I wanted to check and see if you found anything.
I did. That provision only applies when the land's included in district line more than one municipality.
Okay.
So according to subsection E, that's subsection E3, and E provides that in the event the land's to be included in district line more than one municipality, then 1, 2, 3. And so in this particular situation, I don't think we have that, that didn't apply in this particular case.
Okay. Yeah, I did go ahead, and I visited with the Arkansas Municipal League about that, too, and visited with an expert there who read all this stuff, too, and he came to the same conclusion that you did. He was actually kind of curious as to why it was done that way, but he said it's one of those things that probably when the law was written, it was done to maybe address a specific situation. He said, "That's just the way it is." He said, the only, the only thing he said we might do is if, he said, "We could conceivably attack the idea by saying it is not perhaps, perhaps not what was intended for, and that the developer may be imposing this, and that subsequent property owners may not, would maybe not have wanted this." But he said that's probably a stretch, and.
I think so, too, particularly in a situation where the council would have to be supposing what a future property would or would not want, and you'd also have to assume that that future property owner wouldn't be informed at closing, as they're required to be, of all, any and all taxes on their property. And that, you know, we even, in, you know, in a number of situations, there's an obligation on the buyer themselves to be informed of what they're agreeing to, and that's what the closing process is for. So I think that would be, I agree. I think, to quote his words, "Through you, a stretch for the council."
All righty. Yeah, I'll probably, I'll probably go, I know, basically, if we were to vote no, the developer would have recourse to legally require us to go ahead and approve this. I'll probably go ahead and vote no, not because of you or what you're doing, but it's the concept that bothers me. And I wanted to, I hope you'll be patient. Let me read a couple of, I'd sent out an email to my constituents, kind of tell them about this. I've received back several replies, and I thought I'd read a couple of them here real quick. They're just kind of typical of what I got back. He said, one said, "I wish I could go on record to vote no on this. The special improvement district idea was a catastrophe in the '80s and '90s, I know. I purchased my first home then and learned to ask every time I looked at a lot or home about this. If a developer wants to develop an area, he can pay for it on his own. So we probably do not need more homes built here in the country club of Arkansas. I'm already underwater in my, our home, partly due to the recession in 2008, but the soft market in general is also a factor."
Alderman Mosley, would you state who made that comment since you're reading it for the record?
Well, I'd rather, rather not. I didn't get their permission to read this, but do I need to?
Well, if you're going to put it into the record, then I think it has to be stated who it's coming from.
And it'll be subject to FLOI. It is subject to FLOI.
Yeah, it is subject to FLOI. So, I mean, if they, once they send it to you, it's FLOI-able, so, I mean, you can refuse to do it, but, you know, I do think if you're going to read these, you need to state who they're coming from.
Okay, I'll do that in the future.
Okay.
Let me, I'll just kind of mention that the comments I received are that, basically, we've gotten, we have a soft market here in the country club of Arkansas. We have traffic problems, and people were concerned about a situation where a special improvement district might be facilitating additional housing when maybe the economics are not there. And it was concerned to them about the softness of the market and the traffic. So, anyway, that's basically what I was hearing from them. There was also an email that went around this evening. I did not see it. If another alderman thought it was something we needed to address in this regard, I'd appreciate them doing it. It had something to do with some changes, perhaps, in this document here. Was anything changed in this document since the last reading?
Yes, there was. I mean, and I'll let Ms. Allgood address that, but basically, the legal descriptions have been changed to correct them.
What ended up happening, based on the questions that were raised, is we actually dug into, we requested the information that we needed from the title company. They provided it to us. We provided it to the city. When the questions were raised, then we asked the title company to dig back into this, and they realized that they had made a clerical error, and so the page that they had put in was not the property description that they intended to give us. The original documents included the full property description, and so one of the things we did is we had the title company go back and recheck everything, said, "Make sure that this is exactly the way it needs to be." So we have that verification. That's why we have the pictures to make sure that everybody understands exactly the property that is included, and the owners of the property have not changed. Since the original petition was filed, Mr. Fuller has started going back homes and has taken title to a couple of the lots, but he's the sole owner of the entity that owns them, just as he and Mr. Smith were the sole owner of the previous entity. So all the appropriate people that have to be noticed were noticed. The owners of the property within the district intended, consulted the experts that they were supposed to consult, and they made a clerical error.
All right. Is this a substantial change?
No, because it didn't change the ownership at all, and, you know, it was literally a clerical error. It didn't, it didn't change the people to be noticed. The man or the notice would be provided. It's a legal description, which I'll be very honest and say, I can't read the legal description. When I'm handed one, I go to the mayor. So that's, that's a unique ability in and of itself. I don't speak in degrees, so, no, it does, it's not a substantial change. It's the exact same area. It's the same owners. It's the same place. It's the same proposal. Nothing's changed, except I think two paragraphs were added to the bottom of the legal.
All that basically happened, the legal description, is since this whole process started from the very beginning, not since we started here at the city, but from the very beginning, is when you buy a piece of property and there's no, no plaque there, you've got a meets and bounds legal description. It's about this long. Then, in between now and then, we've had two separate plaques, hence what you've seen there, you know, 3A, 3B, whatever. So the legal description changed when that 3A got added in. It basically says, "And all the lots in 3A," and then "And all lots in 3B." The whole gross description stays the same, and then basically, it tacked on the paragraphs that says, "And these two, all the lots with these two."
The timing-wise, Jeff and Ari were trying to do the right thing. They wanted the plating process to be complete, and for everything to have gone through that city process before they presented the petition, to say, "Okay, now that you've approved the plaques, we want you to approve the improvement district," and that's, we should have just went ahead.
But we could have done this a long time ago, but we didn't.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to put a couple of matters in perspective. I think it's safe to say that, you know, construction in this area will go forth whether or not this happens, but an improvement district in itself is a financial vehicle, thereby incentivizing and allowing for sort of that pro-growth opportunity to develop. And, you know, these arguments, whether you're pro-growth, or you have a very protectionist mentality to where you're pro-regulation, they're in a broader context. And when it comes to real estate and commercial development as well, there are vehicles that every sector of the economy utilizes to incentivize growth. Years ago, you may not have seen things like interest-only loans or 30-year fixed-rate loans. Things like PLAs develop over time. You have improvement districts. Sometimes these things in the broader perspective and economy are looked back on as, you know, well, maybe, you know, there were some drawbacks to that. Sometimes with certain types of loans, in the case of some of the subprime mortgages, we look back on those and we say, you know, maybe some of that was predatory. These are larger debates, I think, that sort of go beyond the chambers of the Mammell City Council, and certainly even beyond the state of Arkansas. They're things that have to be debated on a broad national level. In terms of growth here, we are coming out of, you know, a very terrible housing recession and coming out of the doldrums finally. I frankly am glad to see some growth. I think it's going to be a good thing, not only for people who want to make Mammell their home, but also our economy in general. So, again, I think this thing is not as malignant, perhaps, as it's been made out to be, and I look forward to voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lewis. Alderman Norris?
My understanding is that this comes before the city council, and the city council's job is to pass it so long as the applicants have met certain requirements as put out by state law. And I hadn't seen that email that I just got from a resident that talked about the changes in the naming convention, so that's what originally I was going to talk about. But has, from, as far as I can tell, has everything been met, and they've met all the requirements of state law? Okay. Thank you.
If there's no other questions or discussion, I'd need a motion to accept ordinance number 835.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 835.
It's been motion second that the council approve ordinance number 835. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six to one, and one, and one absent. Thank you, Ms. Allgood and Mr. Fuller. Motion passes six to one, and one, and one absent. Thank you, Ms. Allgood, Mr. Fuller. I will say one thing. Madam Sidio's attorney made the reference that she goes to the mayor on legal descriptions. It's not because I'm the mayor. It's because in my past life, I was a surveyor.
You're the only person I know who can read them.
And I used to have to write legal descriptions, and read legal descriptions, interpret legal descriptions, so it has, anybody else that, uh, any other mayor may not have that capability. I'm just trying to point that out.
For what it's worth, Mr. Mayor, on the description here, it says, "Commencing at a found cotton picker spindle." Before you explain to me what a cotton picker spindle was, and how they mark using one of those, I would have wondered what that meant, and now I know because of you.
Uh, I, I just, I just, my vote would be that they take the word "legal" out of legal description, because from my view, there's, you know, it doesn't have anything to do with the law. It's something that someone else has come up with.
Well, and we're, we're really digressing, but anyway.
Sorry.
Alderman Lewis, cotton picker spindles, actually the spindles that sit in a cotton picker, that spin and pull the cotton off the actual plant, pull the fibers off. Well, they're great. They're made of stainless steel, and they'll drive into asphalt and everything else. So, they used to give them away, 'cause they'd wear out, and they'd get dull, and they couldn't pull the cotton. They used to give them away. Figured out surveyors wanted them, so now they start, now they sell them to surveyors at fifty cents a piece, or twenty-five cents, or you go buy a bucket for a hundred dollars or something. But, they're great, uh, markers for putting in asphalt, or concrete cracks, and everything else, and you can drive them in, and, um, they're really, uh, make a good survey tool. But that's, that's what that came about. But, yeah, there's, you'll find all kinds of things. You'll find gun barrels and everything else buried in the ground. But let's go back to the business of the city here. The, uh, next item is the third reading of ordinance number eight thirty-six, city attorney job description. Uh, let me say one thing before we read that ordinance. Uh, on the first reading of this, Alderman Norris abstained from that, and I'm assuming you still want to do that at this time.
Yeah.
So, just clear for the record. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight thirty-six, and ordinance amending the job description for the city attorney position.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance eight three six.
Second.
Spin motion, second that the council approve ordinance number eight thirty-six. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Hoag?
Yes.
Okay. Passes six, one abstention, and one absence. Moving on to new business, the first item, uh, is, uh, Central Arkansas Transit Authority C N G proposal discussion. Uh, I had placed a couple of letters in the council's packet. Uh, Mr. Jared Varner is here, who's the executive director of CADA. Uh, started on the job in the fall, July, okay, in July. And, uh, so he's here tonight, and basically, uh, I'll let him speak and kind of introduce this a little bit, and then, uh, we can discuss it, and, and you can ask any questions of Mr. Varner.
First off, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to be here. It's a, to meet everyone I've wanted for some time to get in front of this, this council, so I absolutely appreciate that opportunity. Learned a little bit about Maumell. Um, learned a lot about the services provided by Maumell. Uh, transit services in this area are doing very well. Since 2009, ridership on the Maumell route has increased by seventy-five percent. So, folks in your city are using the service. Uh, they're using it more and more each year, and as we continue to try to improve that service, I think that'll, that trend will continue. Our board of directors, well, first off, I've greatly, I appreciate the opportunity to work for, uh, a great board of directors, led by Nicole Geeks, who's obviously, uh, you know very well. The city of Maumell should provide a great leadership, uh, on that board, and, and we greatly appreciated that. Um, and so, that Nicole and the rest of the board have been working for about four years to, um, move towards this transition to compressed natural gas. Uh, C N G is a cleaner burning fuel. It is cheaper. Long-term, this, this transition would save the agency money. We spend about two million dollars a year, uh, in, uh, for diesel fuel. And so, once we transition the entire fleet over, we should be able to save forty, around forty percent for fuel, on, on our fuel costs. And then, again, um, this region is, is nearing that, the cliff of, of non-attainment from an ozone perspective, and obviously, burning, cleaner burning, cleaner burning fuels could, could assist with that. But, whatever, what you have in front of you is a request, um, from, from CADA staff, uh, for this, asking the city of Maumell to pay a portion of the C N G fueling station. Um, like I said, the boards worked on this project for quite some time, so, so much so that we received a few grants for bits and pieces of this transition. We have a grant to, um, modify our maintenance facility to accept C N G. I don't know how much y'all know about compressed natural gas, but it's lighter than air, and so it rises, and you have to put in some safety modifications to your facility. So, we've received a grant of about a million dollars to fund that transition. We've also received a grant to fund two compressed natural gas buses. We have about, I think we have ten, uh, 2001 buses that are in dire need of repair. And that's really the impetus from a staff perspective to get, to get an answer to this, this question, is we need, we need to buy new buses. We've got funding for two, uh, C N G buses, and we also have some dedicated funds for seven, uh, seven buses that would be C N G also, if we decide to make this transition. Um, the city of North Little Rock, last Monday, approved a hundred and forty thousand dollars to fund this project. Pulaski County and Little Rock have also, um, agreed to pay large portions of the two-point-one-million-dollar facility cost. Uh, we've asked, um, we're still working with, obviously, Maumell and the city of Sherwood to, uh, make contributions as well. Based on the formula that, that's used to determine agency funding, uh, the amount that we'd request from Maumell is four thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars for fun, that, of course, basically, they're put towards the funding for compressed natural gas fueling station. We're in the process of negotiating with the vendor now. Um, we've got two or three more weeks likely before we can really get some solid numbers on exactly what that cost would be, but our budget's two-point-one million. We're hoping we can bring that down, and if we do, um, obviously, there would be a proportion of all savings, you know, within that, that project, more than likely. Um, so, with that, I will, uh, answer any questions that you may have on the CADA's request for C N G fueling station plan.
Thank you. Alderman Lewis?
Mr. Varner, what is the size of the CADA fleet?
We have, uh, we have sixty, um, community transit vehicles and twenty-four, uh, what we call links, paratransit.
Right. And you anticipate you'll have two of them, which will be converted, uh, rather soon?
Well, if, again, sort of the last item that falls is the C N G station. And if we don't figure out the funding puzzle for the C N G station, we're gonna buy seven diesel buses, and then the funding for the two C N G buses, we'll have to go back to the federal government.
Okay.
Um, and so, we would anticipate, if we're able to fund the C N G station, we would buy nine C N G buses.
Okay. So, the C N G buses, they are, um, purchased new. There is no, uh, transition or conversion of an existing vehicle?
We would not transition existing vehicles.
Okay. Long range, you anticipate maybe ten, twenty years down the line, maybe when you'll have a majority of your fleet running on this fuel?
Well, based on our current replacement schedule, again, that's not guaranteed, because it's depending upon funding, and
Right.
We're gonna have some funding needs. We will be fully transitioned in ten years.
Oh, very good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Varner? Alderman Norris?
I'm a little bit confused at the, it seems like there's two numbers. There's the nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three, and then the four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, are y'all asking for both, or I, could you explain that?
Absolutely. And we, but before I came on board, we had, uh, CADA had applied for a Tiger Five grant. It, it was actually a much larger project. It was a ten-million-dollar project, because that's the minimum limit for, uh, U S D O T Tiger Five grant application. And so, we, we went after, um, a, a ten-million-dollar grant, just gonna buy sixteen buses, the C N G station, and do some other modifications to facilities. And so, um, at that time, we requested of the cities, uh, if you would consider helping us with the match on that grant. So, that nine-thousand-dollar number would have been the city's match for that grant. Obviously, the, we were not successful. It's incredibly, um, competitive process, with, I think, six billion dollars in need, and five-hundred-million dollars in funds. And so, obviously, we, we weren't successful on that process. So, what we did was, we went back to the drawing board and tried to find a funding structure that would, um, obviously, since now, the cities would be receiving, I guess, a lesser-sized project. It's no longer a ten-million-dollar project. Uh, we wanted to try to decrease the, the financial, uh, responsibility of the cities, put together this, sort of this funding mechanism that we have in front of you today, and we were able to lower that, uh, requested amount to four thousand seven sixty-eight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Norris. Alderman Kelly?
Uh, the only question I had is, where is this fueling facility gonna be located?
It's located at nine oh one Maple in North Little Rock.
Okay.
It'll be located on our, on our site.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yes, had we had previously committed the nine thousand, did, did we, I don't remember...
No, no, we did not commit it. If you look, the, there's a letter on the, 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 the second page back is my letter back to Ms. Weinland, saying that, "We will consider it once they got their Tiger grant." And, and I think part of the problem was, Ms. Betty Weinland was the executive director up until June thirtieth, or, and then, uh, Mr. Varner took over. So, I think there was some confusion between taking over, between the two executive directors. This, the, the city council never committed. I told, uh, Ms. Weinland that I'd take it to the council if they got their Tiger grant approved, because I've applied for two Tiger grants. I know how competitive they are. And, so I told her, I said, "I don't wanna, I don't wanna basically knock on that door until we find out that you get the Tiger grant funding." And so, that's what happened. Uh, there, there might have been, well, we've talked to Maumell, and, and that was true. We had talked about it, but the city had not committed it. I actually brought this up, uh, actually in our budget discussions, uh, a little bit. We talked about the CADA and the appropriation, and, and we checked on some riders and things like that, but this was actually brought up in a discussion. We didn't vote on it then either. We didn't add it to the budget. But I said, "CADA will probably come in," they were working on their plan during our budget process, trying to move forward with everything, and making sure that Little Rock and Pulaski County and North Rock committed, because if they didn't commit, there was gonna be a hard, um, it'd be very hard for CADA to come up with that, those funds, if they didn't commit to their portion of it. And so, that's kind of why we shelved it until everybody else was on board. We're kind of the, the last, uh, person coming to the party here. I guess us and Sherwood hadn't made a decision on it, I, I assume. I don't know about Sherwood for sure, but, so, but the, the request has been reduced by half. I mean, basically, so.
Yeah, that's nice. Alright, thank you very much.
But there was not a previous commitment. It was just a discussion, and then, "If you get some other funding, we'll talk." It's kind of, that was the commitment.
Okay.
So, what, what I would propose is that, and we don't have a budget resolution tonight, but what I would propose on the next meeting, that we would prepare a budget resolution to come before this council that would amend our budget to include this provision. And I guess the question is, Mr. Varner, it, it needs to be in 2014? I mean, the, the expenditures need to be in 2014?
We're, we are flexible, I guess, and, and we're still working, because the other entities have, have requested the same thing, and, and CADA has allocated, um, basically, CADA funds, and, and some federal funds are paying for the, for about half of the project. And so, we have some flexibility. If we need to move, uh, towards the end of fourteen, or specific timing, as far as when this might be requested, we, we have some flexibility.
Okay. Alright. But, I mean, I, I would propose that we go ahead and put a budget resolution on the next agenda, and then, for, and to amend it in 2014, and then, when CADA bills us for it, then we would pay it at that time. So, uh, but then it'd be up to the council to decide if they wanted to approve it at the next meeting. Is, is that okay with the council?
Giddy up.
That sounds perfect.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, Mr. Varner.
Did you say giddy up?
You did.
Yeah.
And we appreciate you, uh, coming tonight, and it's a pleasure for the council to be able to get you, meet you. I've actually met Mr. Varner before, so.
Yeah, it was a pleasure, sir. We could have made some plans.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Next item is the first reading ordinance number eight thirty-eight, waiving the competitive bidding procedures. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight thirty-eight, an ordinance declaring exceptional circumstances, making a competitive bidding procedure not feasible or practical, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the city and for other purposes.
Okay, this is, this is one of those things that falls in this weird area, basically. We're buying these vehicles under a state contract, which is allowed. You don't have to waive bidding procedures to do that. But these vehicles then have to be equipped with all the emergency warning lights, the, the cages, the, the consoles that everything sits in, and it has to be installed. The only provider in this area that carries wheeling equipment, engineering and lighting, is, is Fleet Safety. The, the, all of the bill, or all of the checks will be written to the automobile dealership that we're buying the cars from, but in part of that provision, they're going to send these cars to Fleet Safety to get it worked on, basically. And so, that's why we've requested a waiver of the bids. The total of the three cars together will exceed the twenty-thousand-dollar, um, requirement by the state that you have to bid a project. And so, that's why, uh, we're asking that the council, uh, waive the bidding process on this, um, process. Now, and we've also asked that, we have, that we suspend the rules and have three readings. The reason for that, it's not imperative that we have to get the cars in here quick. The problem is, the cars may not be available that long. They have a certain number of cars at the dealerships, and if we delay in three readings, all those cars could be gone by the time then we ordered those cars. And so, that's why it is, uh, requested that we do a suspension of the rule. Chief Williams is here, and he might can clarify any questions that you have, that I've confused you with, or, um, he, he can address it also. But you have a memo here from, uh, uh, the patrol commander, Captain Cory Pickard. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so, if we suspend the rules, we go, we, um, we allow, um, with no competitive bid, how, how fast can we get these cars within our fleet? 'Cause I know it's pretty imperative after discussing it.
We, uh, of course, if, if this is approved, we'll call, uh, Red River Dodge and also Landers Toyota, and order the cars. And if they've got them there or coming, then it just can be done rather quickly. And then, uh, when we get them over to Fleet Safety, then now they'll install the equipment on them. We've had them in the last week.
Okay, good. I know that when we were talking about this during the, um, bit, uh, budget process, that, um, you kind of waited right to the last minute on, on, which is good, but that, you know, I want to make sure that you have the proper equipment that you need to.
Yes, sir. If we get them ordered down, and like I said, and they come on the sort of, then we'll be in good shape.
Okay.
The problem is, the mayor said a lot better than I could, is if we wait, and then we call, say, "Alright, we want three cars," and they say, "Well, good deal. You'll give them off." That's, that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, we, it seemed like we had a request like this about a year ago. Was it for police cars also, where we, we were wanting to waive the competitive bidding and, and to do the three readings, or was it something else? I can't remember.
We had one from the fire department on some equipment.
Oh, we did, we did have on the, the equipment, the, the turnout gear and all that. We did have one on that. Uh, we, we could have done one in the police department. I, I don't know for sure.
I, I have no problem with, with what, what we're doing here. I just, again, I just, I hate the, uh, the three readings, uh, all in one night. I'll, I'll mull this over here before I vote, but, thank you.
Alderman Lewis?
Chief, how do you decide where you're going to source those vehicles from, or what's the process on which dealership you choose to do business with?
Well, whoever has the state bid, and that's what we want.
Okay.
Uh, we, uh, are really happy with Chargers and Landers Toyota as the Chargers. Uh, we own it as an SUV, and Red River Dodge, yes, or, that's what we call it.
Okay.
The state will bid out every specific model of car. I mean, it can range from anything to everything, and then whichever dealership has the best quote on that gets that particular car. So, you could buy a, a half-ton pickup truck. It may be a Ford from one dealership. A three-quarter ton could be a Chevrolet from a different dealership.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Norris?
Does the state bidding process include the equipment?
No. That's, that's...
That's why this ordinance was brought.
Yeah, the, the specific is for the equipment that's going to be added on to the vehicles.
And there is only one company that, that has the products that we need, is that?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and execute a second and third reading of ordinance eight three eight.
Second.
It's been, uh, motion, the second that the council suspend the rules and have the second and third reading of ordinance number eight three eight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that...
Wait, wait, let's have the second, third reading.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
Alright, sorry. Mr. Clerk, if you'd have the second, third reading ordinance number eight thirty-eight.
Being enacted by the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight thirty-eight, an ordinance declaring exceptional circumstances, making a competitive bidding procedure not feasible or practical, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the city and for other purposes. Being enacted by the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance eight, number eight thirty-eight, an ordinance declaring exceptional circumstances, making a competitive bidding procedure not feasible or practical, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the city and, excuse me, for other purposes. authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a contract on behalf of the city and, excuse me, for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we execute the emergency clause for immediate ratification, ordinance 838.
No, we need to adopt.
Oh, adopt first. Oh, gosh. I am off the game tonight.
You're, you're one step ahead of us tonight.
I tell ya, I'm just ready to go. I make a motion that we approve ordinance 838.
Second.
It's been motion second that the council approve ordinance number 838. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, alright. Make a motion that we execute the emergency clause for immediate ratification of ordinance 838.
There it goes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, invoke the emergency clause on ordinance number 838 for immediate, um, immediate, what is it?
Ratification.
Ratification, or approval, or what is that?
Effective date.
Effective date, okay, immediate effective date. Is there a discussion on that motion? Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Mosley?
No.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we have the first reading ordinance number 839 amending hours for city parks?
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 839. An ordinance amending park hours for city parks in the city of Maumell and for other purposes.
I do wanna make note that it's listed as Mayor Watson sponsored this. Alderman Lewis brought this to my attention, so I wanna make sure that he gets the credit for it. That we were kinda, um, had not been, uh, keeping up with the new parks we'd opened and all that. We basically had two parks mentioned, and one of those was not correctly mentioned. And so we're just doing some, uh, housekeeping maneuvers here to, uh, add those parks, and then, uh, uh, address some other issues that came up while we talked about, uh, closing the parks during certain events, such as snow and ice storms and things like that, to, to keep, uh, ATVs and four-wheelers and that sort of thing off the fields and some things like that, that allowed the, uh, uh, police to enforce those. So, uh, that's what it is. And there was also, uh, Alderman Lewis pointed out that we didn't have a department of public safety anymore, which is very correct. So that's been changed to Maumell Police Department. So, uh, this is for y'all's review, and there's no emergency or anything like that that we need to proceed with this any faster than that. Alderman Norris?
Uh, this says that, uh, all parks shall be closed in the event of snow, ice, or water covers any part of the park or roadways near or into the parks.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean they close when it rains?
No.
If, if the road's underwater, it does.
Flooded.
So they have to be underwater? Okay.
Water covers, yeah.
The point is that if the road is flooded, we don't want people coming into the park.
That, that makes sense.
And well, and it's also, at certain times, you don't want people on the fields if they are underwater and things like that. And, and whether they're on foot or on ATVs and everything.
Okay.
Yeah. The baseball fields, they, they typically close them and try to lock the gate to keep people out when the, the conditions are just, it's a muddy mess out there because footprints dry in the mud, and then they're real hard to get out and things like that. It's, it's not every time it rains or anything like that. It's when you have that major rain event.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, as far as the ice and the snow, um, this wouldn't, this wouldn't preclude, uh, people from, uh, sledding on the dam there at Lake Willistee, would it? I mean, I, I don't wanna stop that from going on, but.
I, I don't think so, and I think it's another one of those things where our police use their judgment on, uh, what is adverse to the park now. We do hope it stops the, uh, motocross race that they're having inside the park over the igloos and things like that on four-wheelers and all that. But as far as sledding on top of the, the structures, I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Alright, thank you.
And, and we try to close the gates, and it's, it's mainly our, uh, sports fields that get tore up pretty bad sometimes, and that's what we're trying to protect with this issue.
Alright, sounds good.
If there's no other questions on ordinance number 839, we'll, Alderman Kelly?
The only question I had when I read it, I know we had the 10 o'clock closure at night, uh, but if the games go later, is that considered a special scheduled event?
We, we've talked about that, and basically, yes. If it's a, if it's a function, a scheduled function like a game or something like that, that we're not gonna shut them down and, and stop that at all. But, you know, whether it's truly a special event or not, but it's usually gonna be the tournament games that typically run over, and that would be considered a special event.
I just wanted to bring up that point because I caught that, and I thought that might affect our.
Right. It, it, it could, but on a very rare basis, I think. But I think it's another thing there, too. I mean, the, the police are gonna be able to use their judgment and see if there's referees out there on the field, or umpires, or, you know, whatever, then they're gonna know that, you know, this is a sanctioned event, and it's just having a, a, uh, the games have been extended for whatever reason, a little bit. And we had to clarify a few things because Family Fest sometimes runs a little long, and then the Relay for Life event is a, an event that goes all night. And so that was the, what we were really thinking of when we thought of si- special or city-sponsored events, too. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next ordinance. Next order, uh, ordinance is first reading ordinance number 840 regarding placement of subdivision signs. Mr. Clerk, if you read that by title only?
Ordinance of the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 840. An ordinance amending the provisions governing placement of permanent subdivision signs in residential zones or residential uses in the city of Maumell and for other purposes.
Yes, sir, Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I, I think this looks like a pretty good ordinance, and I, I had a couple of questions here. Uh, when it says however they, uh, if they are to be maintained by the city, when you say maintained, does that include, uh, mowing, uh, that sort of thing?
No, no.
Okay.
Maintaining, in, in my mind, and, and.
This is a sign ordinance, so unless you had mowed the sign, it, it would not, it just.
So it's just maintaining the sign?
Maintaining the sign, yes, yes.
Okay.
The appearance of the sign more so than, yeah, around it.
And, and as far as an existing sign, I mean, I assume all this kinda comes under the existing sign. Can a, a subdivision with an existing sign, uh, get in under this?
I don't see why not. As long as they've met the requirements.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and, and, you know, I guess there's, and that's kinda what's driven some of this, is that we have some that are kinda in no man's land out there and things like that. Now, we're not gonna be able to go back and say, you know, if we maintain it, you've gotta pay now for, you know, half the cost or whatever we said. But, but we may be responsible from, uh, for the signs, but I think we're responsible for them anyway because the developers have basically built them and then left, basically. And, and it's one of those things. What we're trying to do is, we've actually had some requests for some signs going into right-of-ways. It, it's just, you know, having, uh, a, a definite, uh, process of how they go about doing that is kinda what we're clearing up, too.
Okay.
Here. Basically, you know, here's what you have to give us in order to approve it, basically.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions on ordinance 840? It will be on second reading at the next, uh, council meeting. Next item is the first reading ordinance number 841 regarding improvement district number 12. Mr. Clerk, if you read that by title only?
An ordinance of the city council, the city of Maumell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 841. An ordinance to appoint municipal multipurpose, multipurpose property owners, improvement district commissioners to the municipal multipurpose property owners improvement district number 12 of Maumell, Arkansas, and for other purposes. It's a little bit of a.
It is a mouthful.
Say that three times fast.
It, it's ironic that this is also on here, uh, but this is the other improvement district we'd referenced when we were discussing, the one that we started discussion. This is the village of New Bedford. Basically, all the commissioners that were on this district no longer have any, uh, interest or monetary interest into the land or anything, and so they've all resigned. And, and so the, uh, there's a request of new commissioners to be put on this. I will point out that, uh, this request came from an attorney back on December the 17th, but that request actually got into a spam folder, and so we actually missed one meeting, basically. So they're one meeting behind where they should be. I'm not saying you have to do anything. I'm just making it, I'll point out that this really should've been on the January, the first meeting in January's agenda. But they called checking on it, and then that's when it was discovered in a spam folder, so. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, the, has, has the, has this district been affected adversely or anything by the bankruptcy? And has that affected it at all, or has, have funds been collected as they would normally have been collected on this? Is, 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 there's no money missing or anything like that from the special improvement district, is there, that, that we know of?
I, I don't.
They, they don't, they don't provide any sort of an accounting or anything to the city, so I don't, I don't know.
And why, why would we be asked to be doing this? Is this something that's under our purview to, to?
We adopted, the city adopted the ordinance that created the district and established the district and cre- and put the first three commissioners on it. So in order to replace those commissioners, the city would have to replace those commissioners.
The ordinance that was just adopted on the fa- on the improvement district 15 also placed commissioners in that, three commissioners in that one. So basically, it takes an ordinance to replace those commissioners.
Alright.
And typically, they make a request of the city council, just like these attorneys did, and, and that's what occurs.
Alright, thank you.
There's no other questions on ordinance number 841. We'll move on to the next item. Okay, um, I will not be able to attend the, uh, February 3rd, um, is that right? February 3rd, I believe? Council meeting, um, and so, uh, because of that, we need to elect a president pro tem for that meeting. Uh, I just think it's simpler and better if that, uh, person is elected, uh, at the meeting before. That way, you don't have to come in and, and go through the process of doing that. It allows me to chair the meeting while you elect somebody that's gonna chair the next meeting. Not, not saying you have to do it that way, but that's my suggestion. And so I would basically be, uh, say that the floor is open to, uh, elect a president pro tem for the February 3rd council meeting. Or nominate, not elect, nominate. Alderman Saunders?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Considering that, um, the, um, city clerk is handling mayoral business during this time, I think it would be appropriate for him to go ahead and run the meeting, too.
Uh, he can't do that legally.
Oh, he can't?
No, sir. It, it has to be a member of the council, so.
Okay, I have another nomination.
Okay.
Okay, Alderman Hoag. She has done this before, did a good job.
Okay, I have a motion to appoint Alderman Hoag as the president pro tem. Do I hear a second? Okay, alright, is there a discussion on that? Uh, and I've got more lights on, so Alderman Anderson?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna just, um, offer or nominate Preston Lewis, um, just to take some of the heat off of, uh, Alderman Hoag. But either one is, I'm perfectly fine, I think.
Okay, alright. I'll take Alderman's Norris's comment, and then I'll see where we're going with this. I'm not real sure yet. Alderman Norris?
I was just gonna say, I thought last time that we did this, uh, someone said that it was just tradition that we, uh, voted on the, the senior-most olderman, the person who's been doing it the longest. Not that that's binding in any way, but I just thought that that seems like a fair enough, uh, way of approaching it, so. That's senior-most time as an olderman.
Glad you clarified that.
Don't wanna get in trouble.
Okay.
But I guess either way, I'm more.
Alright, uh, we have a motion on the floor to, and, and, and I will, uh, Alderman Norris is, I think, correct. Alderman, or Alderman Ladner served a lot of times as the, the president pro tem when it's done, and other times, you're correct, Alderman Hoag served last year. I think she was supposed to do it the year before, and I messed up those plans. I didn't go or something, but, anyway, uh, so, uh, we have a motion on the floor that, uh, Alderman Hoag serves the president pro tem for February 3rd council meetings. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
I want to thank Alderman Anderson, though, for his recommendation.
I'm just trying to mix it up a little.
I was sitting here in my mind, thinking if we go senior-most next time, I can't remember if that's Alderman Saunders or Anderson. I think they came in at the same time, did they not?
It did.
Might have to pull up a coin next time.
Alright, um, we'll have the agenda set forth and everything, uh, and we'll point out that that's gonna be a little tricky because we're gonna be at the, um, uh, municipal league conference next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday also. So trying to get the agenda out and everything, we're gonna try to do it and get it out on regular time, but if we don't, bear with us just a little bit. But we'll be out of the office, uh, while we're trying to get that agenda out. Uh, so, uh, we, we think we've got a plan put together, and we think it'll work. But just if something fall, falls through, or we have a little bit of a snafu, so if you've got something that you want on the agenda, get it to us as soon as possible, because we're not even gonna be in the office at the Wednesday deadline, noon deadline that we normally work on there, so. Or we'll be leaving about that time, so, yeah. Uh, moving on to mayor's comments, um, I just wanna, I need to do one thing before I get into my comments. Uh, at your, uh, desk tonight, we left the bond task force committee memorandum and, and handout. Uh, it's 160 pages long. Uh, it's not as bad as you think. It's a lot of emails and, and all the data that was put, uh, before the committee, that was provided by the applicants that put a project forward. The first 25 or 6 pages is basically the, the meat of the, the document, and then you can see all the emails that they received, and then the, the actual events. What we would like to do is not do this in a council setting, and so, uh, Mr. Craig Johnson, who chaired that, uh, committee, has proposed that we do a workshop, basically, between the committee and the council. And, uh, so what we're trying to do tonight is set that workshop. Now, and then what we'd like to do is then do a formal presentation of this at the February 3rd meeting. So that gives us very little time to do a workshop, and we have planning commission this Thursday night. Uh, the best time, and then most, several of us are gonna be out of town Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of next week. So the best time that I see is next Monday night. Now, uh, we will not be able to use the south room at that time. Uh, there's already a meeting scheduled in there at 6 o'clock, but we can meet in here for a workshop if everybody's calendar is, is open for that night.
The 27th?
The 27th, yes.
I'll be out of town that evening, but, uh, I can phone in if that's possible.
Okay, alright.
At what time?
Uh, the time is flexible. Uh, 6 o'clock, is that okay? Or you wanna hold it till 6:30? They met at 6:30, if I remember right. Most of the time, the committee met at 6:30. But that's up to the council, too, if you need more time to get there or something like that. Is 6, is Monday night at 6 o'clock okay with everybody except Alderman Kelly? And we'll get him in on a phone call if we can.
And that'll be here?
That would be in this chamber here, yes, uh, as far as I know.
And you'll be here?
I will be here, yes. Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I won't, well, actually, this is gonna be, uh, a workshop, so Mr. Johnson will kinda run that, and we may sit out there and not even sit up here, so.
I like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it works.
Yeah. We can move the chairs around and sit out there. We, and we could, if we come up with a better facility, we might, I might check on the status of the training room at the fire department. That might make for a better workshop area, uh, for everybody. Now, if a lot of public comes, then we won't be able to handle it, so, you know, we, we may have to just do it here. But, um, that would be my choice, is to do it here or do it there. But like I say, the south room has already got a meeting going on at 6 o'clock next Monday night, which is where their meetings had been held routinely. Maybe, we might could do that, yeah.
Is there open late Tuesday, Thursday, right?
Mm-hmm. We'll, we'll check on a couple of locations. If it changes, we'll make sure everybody knows. So is the 27th good for everybody except Alderman Kelly?
Yeah, I, I can make it that night. Yeah, I can make it that night. I've just got a lot of stuff going that weekend. If we decide to delay it, that would be fine with me, but thank you.
Okay. I understand. I got a lot going, too. Yeah.
You won't be here?
No, I will be here.
Okay.
Saying the rest of the week.
All right. So, the meeting is set for the 27th at 6 o'clock. All right. And I gave the copies of these to the press. We're going to put this on our website. There's going to be a link on our website. The PDF file is a 25 meg file, so it's pretty big because of all the graphics and everything in it. But we're going to try to get a link posted tomorrow on our website so that anybody will be able to view this report. Just wanted to point out the Maumell High School wrestling tournament. They had a tournament a week ago Friday night, so I don't even know what date that is now. But it was, it was over a week ago. But they had 20 teams in town, and about 20 of those had traveled from far away. You know, Rogers was here, Rogers Heritage was here, Springdale Harbor was here, Mountain Home. And so, what I was hearing was that every hotel in Maumell and in western North Little Rock was full because of the wrestling tournament. There was 14 individuals on each team with a parent, with at least one parent with them, and some had grandparents there. And so, it was a very large event. It started Friday afternoon about 3 o'clock and wrapped up Saturday. So, you know, I didn't grow up with this type of sport, but I went and watched the matches. Pretty interesting. They'd have four matches going on at the same time, and just the following that they had was really good, and it's definitely an economic driver as far as providing revenue for restaurants, hotels, and all that. So, very good event that the Maumell High School put on and everything and did a great job with it. And Maumell High School finished second to Catholic in that tournament. And then they were in another tournament this past weekend in another city. I'm not sure exactly where that was, and they were in third place, and they were behind Catholic and I think Broken Bow, Oklahoma. I don't know what the final standings were. That's what I saw as they were going on at a post that I read, so...
There are Broken Bow and a Broken Arrow?
There are, yeah.
Wow.
That's true.
Yep. Okay, the other thing, I just wanted to let you know that the city street aid projects, we had applied for a project last year, in May of last year, and it was approved by the street aid committee at their meeting last week. So, that means that, and the two roads that are on that are Edgewood Drive out here and then Millwood that goes up to Naylor. About $290,000 worth of improvements total. $250,000 of that will be paid through the street aid program. It should be done this year. They approved 97 projects the other day, and so the highway department will bid those projects out, and so they've got to break them up into increments. They can't bid all 97 of them at once. And so, they're thinking, starting in June or July, they'll start bidding those out because they've already, there's still a backlog from last year that they're going to bid out in like March and April and May. And so, they'll bid these out starting in June or July, and we don't know where we're going to fall on that because what they try to do is geographically group them together to get a better price, basically allow a contractor to work on several projects at one time. But just did want you to know that, and that's coming from the half-cent half-cent tax that's on the highway program, and it was a program that was set up for that. And so, we won't be eligible for another one until everybody across the state gets one. And so, they did 60-something projects last year. They're hoping to do 97 this year, and there's 500 cities, so you can kind of see, it might be a few years before our turn comes up again. But I just want to make you aware of that, that it was approved. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned Edgewood Drive, which has been a concern to me for a long time. Now, we have enough overlays that it's going to have to be graded down.
Milled.
Or milled, okay. Milled, is that what we're talking about, milling it and resurfacing?
Yes, yes. They will do milling, yes, yes. That's included in the project.
Okay.
Yep. The other thing, I don't have it on my comments, but it's things that happened today. Our United States flag, Arkansas flag, and City of Maumell flag were stolen from City Hall's flagpole over the weekend. So, when I came in this morning, they were not there. And so, I checked with Mr. Stowe and said, "Did you remove our flags for any reason?" And he said, "No." And I said, "Well, then someone borrowed them or took them or something." So, but they've been replaced, so it's, but, you know, it's a little disappointing when you see that occur, and I just hope that whoever took them are respectful of them, you know, and use them for what purpose they should be used for. That's about all I can say on that. Also, today, a burn ban was issued for Plaski County also. So, we received notice at 11 o'clock this morning. So, until we receive measurable precipitation, humidity comes up or something, we're going to be under a burn ban for a while. The next item is the planning commission report, and that should be at the next meeting. Alderman's comments? Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I heard an ugly rumor today about the dredging of Rector Break. Have you, do you have any current information on that?
No, sir. But I don't know of anything that's caused a problem with it.
Okay. At this point, it's just a rumor, as far as I know, but, okay.
I don't know what you're referring to, so...
Well, I was told that the money had been made available, but we had been taken off the priority list for this year. So...
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
I can check and see, but I mean, I talked to Jeff Quinn a couple of weeks ago, and we didn't discuss anything like that.
Okay. Probably just a rumor, ugly rumor.
Okay. Alderman Hoag?
I've had inquiries about curbside recycling. I said I would ask for an update tonight.
I hope to have you an update to give to you at the next meeting. I'll let you take care of that. I'll give you an update to give to that the next one. No, I think it's moving forward. We've still got to work out a few details, and...
I do think it's going to happen.
It is going to happen. It is going to happen. It's going to happen in the first quarter. So, it is going to happen. I just, we're printing up some brochures and ironing out the dates and working out a letter of agreement, and you're probably going to see that letter of agreement. But we're gonna, the way it's proposed right now, I'll tell you this, we're still going to pick up the recycles. We're going to do it once a week, just like we always do. You're going to keep your same bins. There's not going to be a new bin, and that's what we're working on. But it's, but I don't have definite dates or definite information on exactly when that's going to start.
That's definitely more information than I had when I asked the question.
All right. Alderman Lewis?
If you like your recycling bin, you can keep your recycling bin.
That's right.
Wanted to just say, while we had this meeting tonight, there was a open house over at Maumell Middle School, and I just want to pass along a heartfelt thank you to Principal Burgess, Ryan Burgess, and the job that he is doing at Maumell Middle School. I've heard a lot of positive feedback, and that kind of drawing in for the community and recruitment to the school, I think is a healthy thing, and just want to notice that and congratulate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Alderman's comments? Madam City Attorney? Mr. City Clerk?
We'll just note again, the statements of financial interest are due by the 31st, and a point of clarification on the planning commission vacancies, we do have three appointments that will be made in February. That's two full four-year terms and the completion of one four-year term to end in 2015. So, there'll be...
I assume all of those will be advertised and...
They have been advertised once already. Will be in the paper, I believe, again, but, yes, sir.
They're on the city website, too. Just one note, if you schedule a meeting with more than two people at that meeting, you've got to notify everybody on the list that you were provided with the Arkansas Democrat Gazette. So, just, it's in your packet if you need it.
You said more than two. You mean two or more?
Two or more. Okay, you're right. At least two. At least two. Yeah, that's what it says.
And if you need help doing that, just contact me. I've got a distribution list that's, makes it pretty easy.
That'd be the simplest thing to do. If you're going to do something like that, let the city clerk make the notification. Mr. Sandlin is my contact, so that's who I deal with. At the Democrat Gazette, I deal with Mr. Lawson at the Maumell Monitor, so... All right, if there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm late.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All of them favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
Did you get my financial statement?
I did.
He won't tell you, will he?
Well, she's going to have another one. If you think about it, would you let me know?
You got it.
She's looking for something in particular. Well, I'm looking for antique bar supplies.